Regular common council meeting for Tuesday, September 21st, 2010. Let's rise for a pledge.
Lull allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll have the roll call.
Councilor Olson. Bridge. Bender. Mertig. McDonald. Hendry. Finsland. Herrick. McKenzie. Dahlbeck.
Here. We have no proclamations or commendations. Let's ask for the approval of the minutes. I think I heard Mr. Bender first and Counselor Dahlbeck second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose say no, minutes are approved.
Item five is a public hearing. Resolution introduced by the Plan Commission to vacate and discontinue certain streets and alleys referred to in the resolution.
This public hearing is now open. Anyone who would like to speak for or against item 5.1 on the agenda can do so now. For a second time, anyone who would like to speak for or against item 5.1 on the agenda can do so now. And for the third and last time, anyone who would like to speak for or against item 5.1 on the consent agenda can do so now. Or, excuse me, on the agenda can do so now. Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed.
5.1, the resolution introduced by the Plan Commission to vacate and discontinue the certain streets and alleys referred to in the resolution.
Second. Dahlbeck and McKenzie. It's like Dahlbeck and McKenzie is what I heard.
Well, we'll take your choice, Mr. Bender. Motion by Counselor Dahlbeck, second by Counselor McKenzie. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose say no, 5.1 passes.
Item six is a consent agenda.
Please call 6.6. Well, first move for approval.
Excuse me, we still haven't an announcement yet. We haven't finished the announcement yet. Thank you.
I'm going to withdraw. Item 6.10, number two, and that will be resubmitted at a future meeting.
Move for approval. The balance of consent agenda.
Okay, Counselor Finsland, second by Counselor Dahlbeck for pulling 6.6 and removing 6.10, item number two. Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye. Oppose say no, 6.6.
6.6, Counselor Bender is requesting the city find immediate funding for the sidewalk on the south side of North 28th Street from Weeks to Catlin Avenues.
This is a referral, so if you speak to this referral in any form, you are either opposing it, so that is why, because referrals you do not discuss. So, we need a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Motion by Counselor Bender, second and by.
Second.
Mr. McKenzie, any discussion?
I would like to ask Jeff Getzman just to update everybody on what's happening with this.
It's not the purpose of the consent agenda. The purpose of consent agenda is to limit conversation to pre-agreed items, but I suppose we could let Mr. Getzman update us on the subject.
He'll make a sentence or two.
Sure. Counselors, there's about $175,000 in federal earmark left on this segment of road. As you know, the street was reconstructed about four years ago, and that money is still there. It had been allocated for that project and not spent. And the DOT is alerting us that the only thing we can really do is spend that funding on that same segment that we reconstructed several years ago. And one of the projects we could actually accomplish with that money is that new sidewalk. So, what we've done is asked the DOT to assign us a new federal project ID number for that segment. They're getting the federal government to authorize the money for us to spend, and there's enough there to get design done and hopefully construct it then next year in 2011.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose say no, item passes.
Item 7.1, Assistant Public Works Director Getzman is recommending to award the cleaning contract for the municipal service building to General Cleaning Corporation.
Motion by Counselor Dahlbeck, second by Mr. Bridge. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose say no, 7.1 passes.
Item 10.1 is a resolution introduced by City Clerk Kaman, temporarily relocating wards 20 through 24, the 5th Aldermanic District, calling location.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by Counselor Finsland, second by Counselor Dahlbeck. Any discussion? And I'm sure you're all aware for the reason of this change. Very good. All in favor say aye. Oppose say no, item 10.1 passes. We have no business by public, okay. I guess we'll move to adjournment.
We won't require another roll call vote because everyone is still here. And for the record, I will be voting again tonight because I think it's my place to do so. And I'd like to remind everyone, when they do speak to this issue, to state their name and address clearly for the record, and to limit their discussions to three minutes, please. Anything further we need to, before we begin? Okay.
The Committee of the Whole with power to act sewage rate increase of 8.75 and a half percent to start January 2011, and for each year thereafter through January 2015.
Motion for approval.
Motion made by Counselor Dahlbeck.
Second.
Second by Counselor Bridge. Further discussion? We have a presentation from Mr. Roman, Dan Romans. I guess we'll begin with that, then.
Thank you, Counselor Finsland. I'll be starting out tonight. Good evening, counselors and citizens. I think we can all agree we have a pretty challenging issue that is being presented to you. And I know that, I've talked to a number of counselors, I know that you have most likely been receiving calls from citizens or businesses, and I know that, that we as administration and the mayor have also been receiving calls, giving us feedback on the proposal that was brought forward to you last month. Dan Romans from the Environmental Services Division and I have been working closely with Mayor Ross, not only just the last few weeks, but really, I would say, the last eight or nine months on this issue. And I can assure you that Mayor Ross finds the issue of raising utility rates very difficult to accept, but I also believe that he understands that we need to do something about the sanitary sewer overflows that we are having and the basement backups within our community. Given the current economy, I also believe that the mayor understands the impact that these proposed rate increases would have on our local businesses and our citizens, and he has listened to their concerns. For that reason, he would like to offer a revised proposal for the city council to consider tonight, and so before we get into our presentation, I would like to briefly turn it over to Mayor Ross for his comments.
I wish the politicians who passed this legislation and shoved it down to local communities were here to answer for their actions. I absolutely mean that. I have met with mayors all over the state, including the League of Municipalities and Alliance of Cities, that are outraged at what's happening to communities across Wisconsin. They're not only outraged, but many of them fear that with the number of requirements coming to communities throughout the state, some of them even use the word bankruptcy as the, how difficult it will be to reach and achieve future mandates for clean water. And so, they're not here tonight, but you, counselors, are left with that decision as to what you're going to do in this community. And we worked long and hard to not only come to a full understanding that this was something we needed to do, that is, treat our water to the standards that are being asked of us by the regulators. There is no, there's no dispute on that fact. But we worked hard, even through the weekend, on Monday and part of Tuesday today, to offer to you counselors what we think is a reasonable way to get through this without punishing our local taxpayers with more fees, more taxes, and higher rates, which they can ill afford. And I don't care what sort of jargon you use to describe a rate or a fee increase, it's a tax increase. It's all you can call it. It's simply taking money out of taxpayers' pockets and putting it in the pockets of government. And so, the timing of our need for these increases in wastewater utility is very unfortunate. And with the state of our current economy and the difficulty residences and businesses are facing just to pay their bills and keep their doors open, the city has received extensive feedback regarding the proposed 8.75% wastewater rate increase. We knew that we needed to become more creative with a solution that would help us fund these different projects that will reduce, which will reduce basement backups, address the environmental issue of sanitary sewer overflows, and also remain in good standing with our discharge permit. The city council has a very difficult decision in a difficult economic time. I have a five-year proposal that I believe will be more acceptable to everyone involved, that's counselors and taxpayers alike. In 2007, I announced that the city's 12-year debt reduction plan. This plan has been and continues to be very successful. It's allowed our city to reduce its debt by nearly $4 million in just under three years, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars in future interest costs for taxpayers. This plan was put in place three decades, after three decades of negotiation with the state of Wisconsin to return the terminal tax from the Ann Bridge facility back to the city of Superior. Not only have these taxes allowed us to significantly reduce our debt, but we have allowed to fund important economic development projects within our community, and all of you have been a part of that, and there have been many of them that have been funded by this, by this set aside. Currently, 2/3 of the terminal tax is applied to debt reduction, 1/3 is applied to current and future economic development projects. I made a promise to the citizens of Superior that I would reduce and eliminate the tax-funded debt of the city, and I am keeping that promise. I also realize that our current economy, flexibility in our plans and goals is a must. My proposal is, my proposal to the council is as follows. For the next five years, I would recommend applying 1/3 of the terminal tax revenue to the wastewater utility. After five years, these funds would revert back to our current allocation to debt reduction and economic development. This proposal allows us to continue funding our debt reduction plan, continue setting aside funds for economic development, and provides assistance for us to move through the next five years in the wastewater utility when the highest rate increases have been proposed. This plan will reduce the necessary wastewater rate increases from 8.75 to 4% for the next five years, and will allow us to take advantage of the $1.2 million grant funding that is in process. Let me just give you a couple illustrations, and then I'll turn it back over to Jean. The fixed charge, which is $2 a month currently, will rise to $2.43 a month in five years. Monthly consumption rate of 100 cubic feet of water will go from $4.96 to $6.03 over five years. A typical couple in the city of Superior will pay $262.08 currently, and will rise in five years to $318.86. And I would encourage the council tonight to seriously consider this proposal. Jean Vito.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. I don't know what the council's pleasure is at this point. You have a different proposal than what was originally given to you, lower down to 4% if you want. We can certainly go through our proposal, our presentation as planned, but I just thought I would open it up in case there were different wishes from the counselors.
Motion was made to accept the 8.75% increase, and it was seconded. Is there a, does the maker of the motion wish to withdraw that motion at this time?
I make a wish to withdraw.
The second agree.
Yes.
Second agrees. Therefore, motion is dead.
I will continue on with the presentation. Okay. On behalf of Dan Romans and I, we appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the regulatory issues that are affecting us currently and what we're expecting in the future for operations at our Environmental Services Division. And you've been given a lot of financial information. Some of that is now outdated as we look at lowering the rate increase down to 4%. The costs that you have that have been presented to you and the capital projects, they all remain the same, it's just a different, different method of funding, funding those costs. So, my opinion is that if we expect ratepayers to accept these rates, we need to educate them on what is driving us to need these kind of rate increases, and so that's our goal for today. Some of you on the Finance Committee, you have seen this presentation at least once or twice, and Public Works Committee had an older version a number of months ago, but hopefully for the benefit of the citizens that are watching, it will be a good opportunity for them to see a lot of these new regulatory requirements that we're expecting now and in the near future. So, I will start out, and our goal, as I mentioned, is to provide some education on our wastewater treatment system, and to talk about the environmental regulations. We also had a rate study that was done by Ellers, and we're going to touch on that. And as you can see, this is a little outdated. We'll talk about the increases that were approved by the Finance Committee, but those have now, we have a new recommendation. And then, of course, answer any questions that come up. The purpose that we have in Environmental Services Division is to oversee the permit that we have that is issued through the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. This is the same system that governs our stormwater utility and permit as well. And sometimes it can get a little confusing remembering what we're talking about. We're not talking about stormwater tonight, we're talking about wastewater in our sanitary sewer system, but I did include a description of our stormwater system for you as well. A little background on our, on our facility, we have a lot of area to cover. Our city is large geographically. We have 80 miles of sanitary sewer, 80 miles of combined sewer, and you all know, our main treatment facility is down on East Second Street. We also have three combined sewage treatment plants, 16 lift stations that help move the wastewater around, and we're under a current permit that, a five-year permit that ends the end of next year. We have very important regulatory relationships with the EPA and the Wisconsin DNR, and at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Administrator Dan Romans. He will talk about these relationships and give you some more specifics on the regulatory issues.
For the Public Works Committee members and the Finance Committee members, we may have touched on some of these issues. We've worked primarily with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, and they administer the codes for wastewater and stormwater. The EPA then oversees the state regulatory agencies. And in memos coming out of Washington as to guidance for the EPA and what their priorities should be, one of the key instruments that they're looking at following through on and have in the state of Wisconsin is the level of enforcement action against perimeters because they feel that in previous administrations, the enforcement has been lax and it needs to be increased. They are also advocating transparency is needed in order to inform the public of permit violations, and that then invites third-party lawsuits, and then invites the EPA in to participate in the lawsuit. Once they do, then the state is required to enter in as a party as well. And their priorities or their focus is on wet weather pollution from combined sewer overflows, sanitary sewer overflows, and also an emphasis on stronger nutrient regulations for total nitrogen and phosphorus. And that we're seeing in the treatment plant permitting process for new ammonia regulations that are in our permit during this permit period. And what is the city focusing on? We're focusing on sewer capacity so that we can manage wet weather flows. We had a sewer moratorium in the early 90s and had been working through that process with the DNR, with the regulators. It went through a period of time where we did upgrades to lift stations, brought new lift stations with storage on, onboard, and then in 2008, finished up Lift Station 6, and that was to, in, to some degree, address sanitary sewer overflows and basement backups along East Second Street. And then, what is remaining to be focused on is the headworks. What we're doing now is we're being able, we're able to collect the wastewater and transport it to a certain point, but it's not able to get to the treatment plant where we can process it because we have a bottleneck at the front end of our, our plant and along East Second Street. Water quality management also has to do with the new ammonia regulations, and phosphorus and nitrogen are also related to that treatment process improvements at the main plant. This kind of lays an outline of, when we're looking at the headworks upgrades, preliminary estimates are equal to or greater than $10 million. We just started the engineering work over the last year, and we're getting back preliminary numbers. And at this point, we, we have ranges for a diversion structure in the neighborhood of 300 to a half a million dollars. Optimizing treatment plant process, that's the amount of flow that can go through the treatment plant and be treated safely. And then sewer system storage, that is to allow the sewer system more capacity to transport and store flow without backing up into basements. And then CSTP-2 upgrade, that's the other treatment plant that's located next to the main treatment facility that is designed to take large volumes of wet weather flow. It's a, it's a very large basin, and we can run about 75 million gallons through that facility, but we're not able to get the flow to it. So, that, that's what the bottleneck is right now regarding the headworks upgrades. And then when we're looking at the water quality factors for meeting the ammonia permits and other pollutants, we're looking at the, the ammonia requirements that are in our permit right now. We have to install a chemical feed system at $1.6 million. And then, in the next, we'll be negotiating then at the end of 2011, the next permit cycle, and it's a question as to, as we move from current technology, one might ask, where is the endgame? Where does this all end? And the endpoint is going to be essentially drinking water quality or filtered water, but we don't know when that's going to be. So, one of the things that we have to do as we work through that process is apply the new standards for meeting ammonia, and then come to a process where we're able to provide a treatment process that will get us through the interim until we move to what's called membrane bioreactors, and that was left out of the calculations because we're going to try and put that as far into the future as we can, because that can be a $60, $70 million upgrade. And then when we look at phosphorus and total nitrogen, we're in the process now of receiving the new standards for phosphorus, and we don't know, and we haven't calculated additional costs for what that would require. We won't know until the new regulations come out. If we were to keep our current limit, we wouldn't have an issue. If it were to go between .6 and 1 part per million, we'd be on the borderline. If it goes under .6, we won't be able to meet it. We'll have to do major upgrades. So, we should, we're doing studies at, at the current time to, to determine feasible alternatives, and once the new regulations are out, we'll be doing the calculations and working with the regulators to verify what that limit will be in our next permit. And from the financial picture, we've looked at past and current rate structures, and perhaps Jean can touch on this, progress of issues through committees.
Thanks, Dan. What does all this mean financially? That's what we'll be looking at next. And just to give you, or just to put this in perspective, when you see numbers like $64 million for a biomembrane reactor project, when we look at our capital improvement program for our whole city, we, we might have a program that's 11 or 12 million dollars. And, and so that kind of puts it into perspective how, how much of a financial burden this will put on this utility. These are, these are numbers, I've never in my career seen estimated project costs as high as these. And, and as, as Dan Romans mentioned, we did take that large project out, the biomembrane reactors. If you recall, perhaps a couple months ago, the sticker shock we all had at Finance Committee when we were looking at 12 and 1/2% rate increases, that's when we were looking at trying to build up the funds in that utility to be able to do that type of a project somewhere around the year 2024 or 2025. These rates obviously do not include that project, and, and we'll be moving through time and getting better estimates of what will be coming down the road with that. So, what we'll be talking about here is how this issue has gone through the committees, the Finance Committee and Public Works Committee, touch again on the Ellers rate study, talk about the options that we felt we were presented with, the recommendation that is being brought forward. I have some handouts on the impact of rate increases for average users, both residential and, we took a sample of 18 businesses of different sizes. And then, Dan will finish up talking about what we're doing to try to ease the burden on the ratepayers. This slide is pretty self-explanatory. It shows our rate increases historically, and you can see we're at a, we've been level here since the year 2007, and it's starting to catch up with us. I actually had a question posed to me, why didn't we keep raising these rates all through the years? I can tell you that when we were making those decisions in 2008, we had no idea the level of capital projects that were coming down the pike for us. Also at that time was when we were implementing a stormwater utility in the year 2007, was when that utility, we were doing full billing of that utility, and we did make a conscious decision that we would try to hold these budgets flat on the wastewater side of things while people were getting the new utility bills for stormwater. In hindsight, was that the right decision to keep the rates flat? I don't know. Some people would say yes, some people would say no, you should have been building them up, so we have differing, differing opinions on that. This issue has been brought forward, it was brought forward to the Finance Committee in October of 2008, and that start, that was when we started to learn about some of the regulatory changes and requirements that our permit was falling under. In December of 2009, the Finance Committee allocated funds to have a rate study done, and so Ellers, and we have Sean Lances here from Ellers in case you have any questions for him. What we wanted to do was get a perspective from our financial advisor, have them go out and, and look at these regulatory issues so it wasn't just us looking at them, look at other communities, see, see how we were comparing to other areas. And in April of 2010 was when the initial rate study came back. That came back with the 12.5% increases. We knew that wasn't going to fly. So, we started to look at, how far can we push out some of these capital projects? We didn't find a lot that we could delay on, but through the summer, we did try to get the rate down to a more acceptable level, and then just recently, as you know, the Finance Committee approved the rates. And then just recently, as you know, the Finance Committee approved the rates at 8.75 percent for five years, and the middle of August, went to you as a council, and then referred to here tonight. All of you as councilors should have received the rate study from Ellers, and it's a good comprehensive overview of our system. It talks about the history of our cash balances, where we should be as far as having cash on hand, lots of numbers in there about our capital improvement plan, extending all the way out to, I think it was 2024. And then it talks about debt coverage requirements, the structure of our sewer rates, again, the comparison to other communities, and a lot of information on financial projections. These were our options after meeting with the Finance Committee. And I won't repeat this, it was the 12.5 percent. We had a couple of other options. The third one here, looking at 6.8 percent for the next five years, was if we had the ability to substantially delay some of our projects. The largest one that we looked at was the Headworks Project, but we didn't feel that we could extend that out any longer because it's been, it's been an issue with the sanitary sewer overflows that we really needed to work on sooner rather than later. Of course, the last option is no rate increase. And I know I've talked to Councilor Bender and Olson about Googling the three-word sewer rate increase, and you'll find everything from soup to nuts. You'll find communities that are having really significantly high increases in their rates to do capital projects. You'll have communities that are doing absolutely nothing and saying, we'll wait for the regulatory agencies to come in and tell us what to do. Hopefully, we will fall somewhere in between those two extremes. I pretty much touched on all of these points, and so I'm going to skip to the next slide. And that is what Mayor Ross presented to you earlier. We are recommending 4 percent rate increases, and that this will help us to smooth out. The Finance Committee is well aware that we were looking at 8.75 percent increases for five years, but then they were going to drop down to like 1.5 percent for the next five years. By doing this, we'll be able to smooth those rate increases out, and we won't have the So what Dan is distributing now are the estimated monthly and annual impact of the 4 percent rate increases. And what we've done is we've gotten information from Superior Water, Light &amp; Power on what a typical, what the average customer uses. And then we did a sampling of 18 businesses, small, medium, and large, to hopefully get a good representation of that. And there are extra copies for anybody in the viewing public, or the citizens here, if they would like a copy. At this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Dan Romans, and then we're about ready to wrap up our presentation and take questions.
Jean kind of alluded to the role that we play in environmental services. Our role is to represent the city's interests in making sure that we're in compliance with state environmental laws. And in that capacity, it obligates us to work with regulators and trying to understand what their needs are, to ask them to be as flexible as they can as they work with the city in trying to implement the regulatory requirements in a way that's cost-effective to the city in the best, in the best terms that we can live with. Sometimes that is not easy, as we're working through tonight. But maintaining a positive relationship with regulatory agencies provides us a lot of flexibility in working with them. That's something that has taken us probably about 17, 18 years to develop. Once you have that trust, you can work with them and explain what challenges the city has, and they will work with us in a way of helping with funding and, as with our SSOs, providing a timeline going all the way back to 1992. And then the other key instrument is being proactive in taking the initiative to suggest ideas and work through a process that gives us a long-term plan, rather than waiting for them to take the initiative. Once that happens, it can invite participation by the EPA, and their interest is not as much in partnering, but more in regulating. They feel that they get involved when the state regulatory agency communication breaks down. And then seeking all-related grant applications. Over the years, DNR has been very helpful in helping us get projects funded. And with the ERA funding that we received over the last year, two years, allowed our recommendations to be highly ranked based on objective criteria, but because we are in good standing, they, we get significant consideration in that process and can, are able to argue our case in a more favorable manner because we have credibility with them. Participating in technical advisory committees that assist the DNR in writing new code, that's a key component. We are involved in essentially every technical advisory committee that the DNR develops, either as a member or a participant, so that we can influence their decision-making in such a way that the regulations that get passed are workable for the communities. Now, the DNR has limitations on what they can do and what they have to do, but they are very open to listening to what the city of Superior has to say. And we represent the significant region in the northern part of Wisconsin, and they listen. And this helps to ensure that new regulations consider feasibility of implementation. So at this time, we, I don't know if we have a motion on the floor, or if you want to entertain questions. I have additional slides, if there's maps of overflow locations or basin backups, that kind of thing. So welcome, any questions that you might have.
At this time, we do not have a motion on the floor. Would somebody care to make a motion to accept the mayor's proposal?
Do we need to have a motion in committee? We don't have motions for discussion on any other committees.
We don't have any motion right now on the floor.
Do we need one to have a discussion?
I think we should have a motion of some sort.
I would like to accept the mayor's proposal.
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilor Henry and seconded by Councilor Bender to accept the mayor's proposal. Now we'll open for discussion. Councilor Henry, I guess, is first.
Oh, several questions. One, what, if anything, has happened to other communities that haven't gone along with the state and federal regulations? Have they been fined or just kind of taken over as far as the sewage? Or has any action occurred?
Well, yes. Most immediate concern for the city is the issues that Duluth has gone through over the past few years. In talking, I, as we were putting together the PowerPoint presentation and the information, I did talk to our regional DNR representative, and they said, we will work with you, but the biggest concern that you have is if we're not able to work through something, that the federal regulators will come in. And he said, that's the wild card here, and that's the biggest concern that we have. In Duluth, when they had sanitary sewer overflows that were greatly publicized, television shots of water coming out of the sewers, that also happened to be at a time when they were having high bacterial counts on their beaches, which was probably more associated with stormwater. But once that image was planted and this became a public concern, that's when the EPA felt that they had to step in. They tend to look at highly publicized situations where they're, where they can come in and correct as a federal agency. In Duluth, that's what happened, and they have a compliance decree, I think by 2016, to eliminate all SSOs. What I've told the state regulators is when you have non-permeable soil like we do, clay or rock, if you get enough rain, you're going to have overflows. So what we needed is, we needed to have flexibility in how the rules are applied and be able to come up with a plan over time that the city can meet. And the state has been very open to that, and we are on the Technical Advisory Committee for SSOs, which are going to start up, they say, this fall. So yes, there are ramifications. I know in Ashland, when we were going through enforcement action in the early 90s, the council there had said, we're not, we're not going to do the rate increases. And then it got turned over to the Attorney General's office, and then they ended up being ordered to build a new treatment plant. So they had to abandon their old one and build a new one. In our case, we were referred to the Justice Department in the early 90s, and then they negotiated a consent decree that mandated what we needed to do. Right now, we have a good working relationship with the DNR. They'll do everything they can to work with us. But what we don't know is the intervening of the EPA. And the EPA has come in in Wisconsin and intervened and overruled DNR positions. And that's what our local engineer had mentioned to us. He said, that is the wild card. And he said, I, he said, that's what you need to be concerned about. Even if we're able to work out something, if it doesn't look like it's moving, then they, they can come and, what they'll do is they'll do an inspection. They do an enforcement inspection about every three years at our facility. So what they do is they audit, they review everything, and if they find something that's a concern, then they will write up a report and require action on that, and then that can open a further investigation. So we've been fortunate in the last three that they've gone well.
Just a further comment there, that this time, we might be able to lower it down by digging into the terminal tax a little bit. I'm not too familiar with that or whether there's restrictions on it. I guess I'm kind of looking at, you know, there are only so many things that we can probably dig into without raising taxes, and if we keep getting these unfunded mandates, we're going to be up against it when we get the next one. And I'm kind of, I'm also wondering, you know, what we can do about it, if anything. Maybe we can write ads in the paper or something saying, get ahold of your state and federal representatives, and we don't, you know, we don't want to raise your taxes. You know, they're making requirements and saying, here's the requirement, and you pay for it. You know, I don't know else to do. That's one idea, I guess, that just popped in my head, but it's just a comment that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Councilor Bridge has a question.
Seems to me Duluth was levied a pretty big fine in the last couple of years, and I'm wondering what's the other potential for, you know, penalties if we're not in compliance, other than, you know, I mean, if they just take over what we have going on and tell us what to do. But, I mean, are there other possibilities for fines levied against the city of Superior?
Yeah, there are federal requirements where you can be fined. I think it's something in the neighborhood of $12,000 a day. I'm not sure what the city of Duluth was able to negotiate, so I, but it was hundreds of thousands, I believe, in fines, and then they were negotiating to apply those fines towards improvements. And I, you know, that's been in negotiation for several years. And then out of that, they're building several storage basins, and their rates are significantly higher as a result, and that drives everything that they do then. The concern is, is we, right now, as we're planning out our costs, the DNR is, has been working with us since 1992. Now, the concern would be as if someone comes in and says, you need to do this, and you need to do it all now. And if we don't have a plan, then the concern is that they will implement what the plan is. And that then gets really costly because it's not necessarily based on what our needs are. It's not community-driven. It's federally driven by what they feel is one-size-fits-all, and that can be problematic. That's where the, that's where the big cost comes in. I hope that answers your question.
I don't see any other council, oh, yeah, no, Councilor McKenzie has it later.
Yeah, Dan. First off, is it, is it true that we'll never stop all overflows? We'll never get to the point where we'll have zero overflows? And then the bioreactor membrane system, that's the ultimate goal? Is that the Cadillac of the systems, and that's the ultimate goal at some point?
Those are two excellent questions. My honest answer as a utility administrator is, if you, any engineer will tell you, if you get enough flow going into a pipe beyond what its capacity is, it will not be able to contain it. The question is to take this to extremes. When you have a Katrina-type event, everything's underwater, and you have SSOs. But they don't enforce on that because it's acceptable, because you've got other catastrophes you're dealing with. Then the question becomes, well, what level of flooding or what level of rain event is acceptable and what isn't? And that's what we can't get an answer on. They, the EPA will say, we retain the authority to make a determination of enforcement, and we can't give up that right, but we can waive it if we feel that you've taken all reasonable steps to prevent it. I hope that answers the first question. And then the second had to do with, essentially, how much is enough? The Clean Water Act permitting system is really a permit to pollute waters of the United States. So if you look at it from that perspective, at some point, they want to get that to zero. And the only way you get that to zero is not to have pollutants. Well, how do you do that? Are you going to be creating a drinking water facility? In a lot of areas where they do water reclamation, it has gotten to essentially that point where the water is so clean, they can send it to a water treatment facility for filtration and reuse. That's, in my opinion, where this is going, but we don't know when, and we don't know how far away that's going to be. But what's going to drive this are pollutants of concern. There are certain types of targeted pollutants that the EPA looks at, and they, and the states, and they want those brought below any level of detection. And now we have the ability to detect these at very low levels. So when those get into your permit, and you have to get rid of them, then you're ending up going to that type of technology, that, the only type that will get you there, and that's filtration or membrane bioreactors. In those communities where they get ultra-low phosphorus limits, they may have to go to filtration. And so, and this is all being, this phosphorus rule is being driven by the EPA. They came in and told the state, you need to get moving on this. We sued Florida, and we'll sue you. So that's what's driving this. It isn't the state, you know, they're doing what they're, they were moving forward on this, but they were having some discussions about having it a little bit more flexible, and the federal regulator said no. And so I hope that kind of, it's a really good question, and it's not a simple answer. But there's, there's a lot involved.
Can I make an additional comment?
Yes, sir.
What Dan's telling is very good. There are some other threats out there that are being discussed. We have a pharmaceutical problem as well, with more and more Americans on pharmaceuticals. And it isn't what you think. It's not the pharmaceuticals being thrown down the toilet. It's excretion. And right now, they cannot have the ability to detect pharmaceuticals that are consumed in the body and then excreted. There are a whole level of standards that are being considered, and there isn't even the science right now to detect that type of pollution or that kind of threat to our drinking water. And so this is going to be an ongoing problem for communities, but there's a number of threats, and this one here is being actively discussed about, people are on a lot of drugs today. Forty percent of Americans take prescription drugs. Those drugs are excreted, and they're put into our drinking water. So there's So there's a whole host of threats yet that are going to have to be scientifically determined and then find a solution.
Counselor Olson is participating by a phone connection, and I'd like to give him the opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments he wishes to make.
Thanks, Mr. President. I do have a few comments. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, Gene, I want to thank you for the time that you took with Counselor Bender and myself last week in the committee. In listening to the comments here, there's a couple of concerns that I've got. And the report that was given to us, as far as the membrane bioreactor, we had requested the elders to do the rate increases without the buildup of reserves. Maybe we should look at redirecting that and using the reserves. The reserves are there for a reason, and I think right now, it's a good time to use them if they're available. The other thing that I've got here is that I'm glad the mayor's on board with slowing down, paying down the debt for the time being. That was my idea last week with Gene, and that seems the most logical thing to do in this economic time. We've got a beautiful bond rating, and we should be able to borrow money at a very low rate if we need to, and if we're allowed to under federal law for this type of issue that we've got facing us. My other concern is, is when we're using this terminal tax, it's my understanding that that has dropped significantly. And hopefully, we're working at getting that back up to the level that, of over a million dollars that was originally allocated for these projects. With the presentations that have been made tonight to drop into the, from the 8.75 to four, I guess I wonder, in such a short time, do we negotiate further? Do we try and get to a 3%? The numbers look good as far as the increase of, of the cubic foot from 496 to 603 and 262 to 318. That may be fine to a person that makes 50, $60,000 a year. Last week, Wisconsin came out with a figure that one in five people in the state of Wisconsin have the poverty level of $10,000 for household income. That's 20% of our income, and I don't know what Superior's actual figures with that. In my district, in South Superior, in the Home Crop Trailer Courts, we've got a mixture of people with the professions that they do, with the incomes that they make. And the majority in those districts, mine included, our housing stock is old, our population is old, we have people on fixed incomes. I still, I think that if we had a chance to, if we don't have a deadline of tomorrow at noon, that we don't make a decision tonight at this committee as a whole. We look into further negotiating to a lower rate, if possible, see if there's any other options that are available for citizens. Because our citizens are the ones that are gonna be staying here. I can't, you, you guys are a little bit behind me here on the video, but I'm sure there's a host of landlords out there that are gonna be passing on these crops to their tenants. What do we do with the people that are renters in this community, which is a very large percentage of our community? So more comments and anything, I appreciate the great efforts that everybody has done. But I'm not satisfied that we can't negotiate a little bit further and see what we can. Dan Romans to you, to you, you've done a fantastic job, and everybody else that's been involved. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other counselors' lights on at this time. So we do have three people that have signed up to speak. I'd like to call on them and give them the opportunity. Gene, Gene, did you have a comment to make first?
Yeah.
President, did Mr. Olson need three questions answered?
Did Mr. Olson need any questions answered? I don't believe so. He didn't ask any, that I heard.
I've got it.
No, I have home time.
Go ahead, Gene.
Can I just make a quick comment? Counselor Olson, your observations are very good. And just for clarification, I, I would like to touch briefly on the reserves issue and the terminal tax issue. And absolutely, you are correct that the terminal tax has decreased substantially, and we are working very hard with the state to right that wrong and to get that assessment back up where we expected it to be. The mayor's reference to using one-third of that equates to about $250,000, and that's what equates to the 4.75% that will come from the terminal tax versus the rate increase. So I don't believe at this time that we have more capacity within the terminal tax to put it towards rate increases. And then also, on the reserves. When we were talking about building up reserves and using reserves, we were talking about that large biomembrane reactor project. And right now, when we're looking at the cash equity of this utility, we probably have about $5 million. We're looking at projects in the next five years that are $30 million. So we also have, we want to keep, you know, a certain amount of cash on hand so we don't go negative. And so, I guess to cut to the chase, we don't have a lot of reserves. We will use some of them, but they will, they will quickly be depleted.
Thank you, Gene.
This time, I'd call on Kevin Peterson.
Being that this is a committee meeting, I don't know if we have a time limit or not, but I was, I was truly, had maybe two minutes of comments, but I feel compelled to ask for maybe a little more time because this whole thing is, is, I think, well, first of all, it's positive and great options that the mayor offered. But that wasn't on the agenda. It is pretty major change, and there, I can't be the only one to think of the pros and cons. Certainly, there's, for every good idea, there's an alternative, a flip side to it. And as the mayor mentioned in his presentation, his efforts on that were taking place this morning. And, and the public certainly hasn't had an opportunity. So I feel compelled to comment on a few things, so, and certainly, the mayor had a few more than three minutes, but I shouldn't be much longer. This, this rate with the annual rates for a family of four, and it has a single and a couple, I just point out, my recollection of looking at the elders' report is that the typical customer in Superior is about $42 a month, or on the high side of those, of those three examples. And also, I assume you're not gonna, well, Dan Olson suggested further discussion. I don't even know if you can even vote on this, because it really wasn't on the agenda to have, it was either 8.75 with power to vote. This is a pretty drastic change, so I don't know if you're gonna have discussion on that or not. I assume you, I assume you can't vote on it, but maybe you can. Nevertheless, when a community our size contemplates a project investment in the tens of millions of dollars, that, that investment needs community education and community support. Frankly, I don't believe either are present at this time. The Finance Department's own report states on page five of tonight's, that was available in tonight's packet, and I quote, "Public education is necessary before the rate changes. Environmental Services Division and Finance Department staff are planning ways to reach out to rate payers to provide education on the need for the wastewater rate increases." So before you tonight was an almost 9% for five-year increase that Finance Department proposed and wanted, with the promise that they'll educate the public after you approve the increase. This is akin to a famous Congresswoman who said that we must pass the health care reform bill, stating that we'll find out what's in it later. So please don't be swayed by the reports in the, by the comments in the report that suggests that it's the counselor's fault if we don't get this done immediately, and we'll get fined by the EPA and the DNR. As such fines are, if it's because of delay, it wouldn't be on the backs of the council that just put this before them tonight. "The Finance Department prepared a thick booklet with spreadsheets and wish lists of over $100 million. These are projections for 15 years into the future with revenues, expenses, and capital improvements. And as, after some concerns, it's went from $100 million to $30 million. So we should be happy with $30 million." And with all due respect to the Finance Department, as they've been very cooperative with my inquiries, two years ago, I looked at a similar thick booklet from the Finance Department with a wish list and projections and spreadsheets and revenue streams and bonding and all the same stuff over a similar period of time. It was for a $9 million TIF. And two years later, the projections couldn't be further from the truth.
Mr. Peterson, am I gonna interrupt you at this point? We're well past three minutes.
Well, you gave the last speaker five and a half, so I'm almost done. If, if you could, give me another minute.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to suspend the rule so that he has more time.
Thank you. The stormwater and sewage in this report are intricately combined despite claims that they are separate. If you read the report, it says they're separate, but yet now we have a new, maybe it's been around forever, but Dan, Dan Romans will vouch for me. I was to more stormwater committee meetings when you created this thing than most of the people on the committees. And I never heard of wet water, wet, wet weather pollution. It's another name for stormwater, and, and it goes on to describe projects that are stormwater-related. So you're meshing sewage requirements and stormwater requirements, and you're bamboozling it with information. In conclusion, I don't suggest that none of this is needed. I don't suggest I know exactly what is needed, but I do suggest that there are contradictions that must be explained before this, this community gives, gives a bill, that you give the community bill for $35 million, going on $110 million. So unless you firmly believe that there's no better solution, you should stop this. And, and another idea that come to mind, at some point, I would think it'd be cheaper to not throw good money after bad on this $30 million. At some point, it'd be cheaper to ship our stuff over to Duluth. I mean, it's just an idea. Before we spend, at some point, it would be financially advantageous. I don't know if it's $100 million or $300 million, but we take their garbage, maybe they could take our stuff. Thank you.
We have Marty Curtis signed up to speak.
Marty Curtis, 5301 East First Street. And I guess I'll just come out and ask if I can have another minute ahead of time. This is a rather important issue, and hopefully you guys will give me a little more time. First, I'd like to thank Counselor Olson and his comments. I think that's pretty much says what most of us are thinking. This is very expensive, and I guess with all the new information we have tonight, I kind of look at that thing that's still there behind you that says questions. And I think all the citizens have more questions because things have so drastically changed, even just in the last half an hour. I, I don't know how they can expect you guys even want to vote on something like this without having all the information and having a chance to study it. But tonight, you are faced with a tough choice. You are considering raising our sewage rate by more than 50% over the next few years. Yes, 50%. We say 8.75, but when you add it all together, it's over 50%. A short time ago, many of you expressed concerns over a 17% increase in Superior Water and Light rates. These charges all come on the same bill. And for informational purpose, there's a public hearing for the proposed Superior Water, Light, and Power increased rates tomorrow, Wednesday, September 22nd, at 6:00 PM at These rate hikes, this is kind of same thing Counselor Olson said, but these rate hikes are tough on the low-income people. Many are unable to pay their utility bills on a timely basis. The inability to pay sewage bills in full on time creates significant hardship for low-income homeowners. In Superior, many live in low-income apartments. They don't have an additional $5, $10, or $12 to pay their Superior Water and Light bill. Sewage is the last to get paid. When Superior Water and Light bill is not paid in full, sewage takes the largest hit. When these sewage fees get charged to property owners, they must be passed on to tenants. Sometimes this means requiring higher deposits to protect against delinquent fees after moving out. All this has a practical impact on our neighbors. Businesses will be hard-hit as well. The thought that they can just pass it on to their customers in an already sluggish economy is doubtful at best. We need to look for what is best for our community as a whole. In the past years, we have seen sewage amounts well in excess of $500,000 transferred to the city for tax collection. In the near future, we can expect these dollar amounts to double if you pass this tonight. The telegram talks about nearly $25 million improvements needed. At the city level, the dollar amount for these improvements seem to keep changing, from the nearly $25 million mentioned in the telegram to a maximum of $36.5 million, now revised to $30 million, with $25, $28.5 million in bonds required. The reason for the revision appears to be there were not enough funds brought in by the proposed rate increases to make the payments. It appears only two pages of the rate study have been updated with the proposed increases, which makes it almost impossible to see how they now intend to disperse the $6 or $7 million less in funds if collected. How can a wise choice be made without all the correct numbers? From the information the city has passed out, it seems to be an all-or-nothing proposition. Although most of these improvements seem to be proactive, which leads me to believe they are not being required for this permit cycle. Even our city leaders talk about alternate timeframes for compliance, and we've heard quite a bit more about that tonight. It seems to be a lot of doubt in the area of what needs to be done and when. Our city says during 2007 through 2009, the level of capital outlays in the utility was not at a level that warranted additional rates. Increases in the expenditure budget was held flat for the 2000 through five, through 2009 years. But it also appears the city of Superior has been in violation of sanitary sewer workflow guidelines on East Second Street since 1992. Almost 20 years of being in violation. I wonder if our police department, building inspection, or fire department inspection allows this kind of timeframe in their enforcement efforts. I kind of doubt it. It appears to me the EPA and DNR are willing to work with us during these hard economic times to allow us to comply in a financially prudent manner for our citizens. As we enter our next permit cycle for due sewer discharges, I ask our city to lead by example. Administrator Dan Romans is asking for immediate funds to do improvements totaling almost $5.4 million, with a grant for about $1.2 million. With less, with less than a 6% budget cut, the Environmental Services Division could fund these improvements with no cost increases. Perhaps some of these funds could also come from the revenue from the Town of Parkland Sanitary Sewer District 1, which, way I'm told, is just starting up now, or from the general fund.
Mr. Curtis, we're at five minutes, sir.
Can I have 20 more seconds, I think, about? One paragraph. Thanks. If our city makes this effort, I think our citizens would support a one-year increase to be passed of 10%. Between the two of these, we could fund at least $12.5 million in improvements, maybe more with additional grants, significantly more than $785,000 per year in the past. It is important to remember that we'll be one of the first in the state to renew our sewage permit, and the rest of the communities in the state will be watching to see what Superior does.
Right. Mr. Curtis, I understand everyone's excited.
Ten more seconds. That's what he'll say.
If you don't mind.
The time is up, sir.
Please vote no. Thanks.
We have another speaker signed up. The instructions say, "Please print," so I can't read your last name. Brian, apparently, something. Could you please state your name so I can correct it here? Read your writing, and it says, "Please print." What's your last name, sir?
Rieger. R-E-G-E-R.
R-I-G-E-R. Can you state your name and, and the address, please?
Could you state your address for the record, please? Yeah, 1416 Weeks. I think I wrote it on there. Yeah, just a few comments. Economically, we're facing, over the past three years, we've got 5.5, 8, and now 8.4% unemployment locally. The core CPI, or Consumer Price Index, has been flat or slightly decreasing. Further economic deflation is coming. In a deflationary economy, paying down debt is what we should continue to do. If we can have an explanation regarding the system to better understand this biomembrane system, that'd be helpful, but in my opinion, a biomembrane system for the city is unnecessary. As far as I know, Wisconsin already has among the highest water quality standards. In my humble opinion, this looks like a state and federal legislator's tip to progressive special, special interests environmental firms to the tune of $60 million. This looks like overbearing regulation. Finally, homeowners, renters, businesses cannot afford these higher rate increases. I urge the council to reject unnecessary rate increases. Thank you.
Counselor Mertzig.
I have a question for Frog, actually. Can we actually vote on this new proposal, since it's not on the agenda?
It's, it's really not a new proposal. What's been placed on the agenda with the power to act is a sewer rate increase, and the...
Well, it's, it's new in the, in the, in the numbers.
It certainly has been amended, absolutely. It certainly has been amended, absolutely. But it's my opinion that, uh, the motion can be acted on as amended. The heart and soul of the business item before the council tonight to be acted on is the contemplation of sewer rate increase. Obviously, that, the, the, the actual increase itself has been, um, well, hasn't been manipulated yet, but it, a manipulation of the, or a modification of that number is before you. That's an amendment. That's an amendment to a main, a main motion, and that's what amendments are for. So, I have confidence in, in this procedurally.
Sure. Uh, and then, I guess I have a comment. I, I came prepared tonight with this eight-point-seven-five percent, and I had a lot of my constituents call me and, and, and we had, we talked about it for quite a while. And so, I'm in agreement with, with what some of the, the people said, that, that this has come in front of us today and we haven't had time to really flesh it out and, and, and ask questions, and I'm sure there's gonna be questions. I know, I'm already starting to formulate some questions in my mind, so, I'm in agreement that this needs to be, uh, moved to a later date, uh, with further discussion.
Councilor McKenzie.
Yeah, I guess I have similar thoughts, uh, but, uh, first, I think Dan Olson had some really, um, good comments. I think there were some really good observations. Um, I think, uh, with the idea that, um, I guess we don't have a deadline, um, you know, these wouldn't take effect until, uh, after the first of the year. I like Dan's idea of maybe doing a little bit more talking about this. I, I'm, I'm a little bit undecided right now. Uh, also, Mayor, I think, uh, great comments as well. Uh, I think it's a great idea to, again, think about, uh, a compromise. Uh, when I first thought about this, uh, this eight-point-seven-five percent, um, I, I knew that this wasn't gonna fly with the people, and so, you know, I, I was thinking on the similar terms as you, Mayor. But again, I think in light of, of all this new information, uh, again, Dan Olson, uh, excellent, excellent comments, uh, I would like to see this referred back to a finance committee, uh, seeing as how that there's no, uh, there's not, there's not an immediate need for a decision right now, and seeing as how that these, uh, rates wouldn't go into effect until after the first of the year.
Well, a motion to, a motion to refer is always appropriate if you wanna formalize that as a motion, and if it's seconded, um, we would then have an opportunity to debate the matter of referring it, so...
Well, I'd, I'd like to make that motion, then, also.
A second. Motion made by Councilor Merzig, uh, McKenzie, and a second by Councilor Merzig, I believe.
There's a tie, but we're close.
The motion made and seconded, are there further comments on the motion to refer? Councilor Bridge.
Well, I'm not sure how I feel about it. Honestly, I mean, this is a very distasteful thing to have to consider at this, at this point in time. Um, I think, uh, you know, to send this back to committee under the guise that we don't have enough information is, is pretty phony, because it's half the increase that we've been contemplating for a long time, and the numbers are pretty straightforward. They haven't been manipulated. They're, uh, you know, they vary based on the fact that we don't know exactly what we have to do to a certain degree, um, but to a certain degree, we do know exactly what we have to do too. Cities all over the state and, unlike Superior, and Canadians too, are stepping up to the plate on this, and it doesn't make it any easier to take, but we have a responsibility to protect Lake Superior in this as well. Um, you know, I, I guess postponing it is not the worst thing, uh, that we could do here, uh, but I, I'm, I'm not sure it's necessary. Approaching this as though this is something new, and it's been in committee for almost two years right now, seems to be, to be a, a, a very strange thing to say, so...
I'd like to have my opportunity to speak to this issue. Uh, I think that we have to remember that each generation is responsible for what happens to the next generation. If we don't provide the funds to keep the system functioning according to today's standards, it's not going to fix itself. It's not going to get better. Someone's gonna get stuck with the bill. If you feel your grandchildren should pay your debts, uh, I don't feel that way. I think we should take care, step up to the plate now and start paying for what we are using today and whatever standards we're required to meet, we'll have to do that. Let's not just pacify some selfish interest by postponing the inevitable. It won't solve it, and it will only temporarily, temporarily gain you some goodwill with those who someday are gonna say, "Well, you saw this coming. Why didn't you do something about it then?" And that's the kind of thing we've had even recently. So, I think, uh, when we first became aware of the problem, we, this little four-and-a-half, four percent, whatever, will seem like a trifle compared to what we're going to be facing if we don't do something about it soon. And I think it's time to stop thinking about what will get me re-elected and do what's best for the future Superior. I think we should not stifle future economic development, and we will be doing so if we don't provide adequate water treatment for this community. Other people are gonna look at that, this and say, "Well, they don't have what we need," or they're gonna have a big bill hitting them in the future. So, let's take care of it now. Let's face the facts and do what's right for the future. And I will request a roll-call vote on any of these actions, because I think that when this does come back to bite us, people will wanna know who had tunnel vision and who voted for the future. I don't think the immediate appeasement of your constituents is what we should do. I think you should vote your conscience and not for reelection.
Can I comment, please?
Yes.
Um, I guess, uh, the biggest concern that I have right now is if we've been able to go from nine months ago, twelve-point-something, to last week, to eight-point-seven-five, to today, to four percent, the, the question and the concern that I brought up is, is this like a best and final offer, or, or the concern that we're, we're not at a deadline for noon tomorrow? And myself, I'm being a little selfish here, but I don't have anything in front of me except for a computer and a telephone, and with all the stuff that's come forward today and the rates that, uh, that have been brought forward, I think that we'd all be serving our, our city well, our, our children, our grandchildren, if we took another minute or a day or a week. So, look at this. My concern is far from being worried about being elected for another term of city council. I pay these bills just like everybody else in that room that is a citizen of Superior, and I think that's what we need to look at as well. So, looking at what we wanna do into the future, it is the responsibility of us as councilors. In the same token, I don't think we should jump to a conclusion tonight when we've been brought forward with new information. And if it isn't a best and final offer, then we should, we should be hesitant about making that decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to refer. Are there further comments to the motion to refer?
Yes.
Councilor Merzig.
Actually, uh...
Councilor Bridge, huh?
Uh, actually, uh, Council President Finsland, I wanted to comment and, and, uh, provide a little bit more information on one of your comments that a lot of people might not understand is that, uh, although it was brought up, I'm not sure how much, uh, impact it actually created. In nineteen ninety-two, we were denied any economic development, any type of development for approximately twelve years because of our sewer system, and we could be right back in that boat.
Councilor Merzig.
Yeah, actually, believe it or not, I agreed with a lot of what you said earlier, and we do have to, uh, take responsibility now for this, although, if we have time... Oh, sorry. If we have time, uh, in my mind, there's, there's absolutely no reason to deliberate, uh, take a little longer to deliberate on this and, and think about it and get some input from, from the, our constituents, the people in our community, and, uh, I really don't understand why this would need to be pushed through right now, tonight.
Finance Director Vito.
Thank you, Councilor Finsland. Um, the, these words, "best and final offer," have come up a few times tonight. I can tell you, I, I, I find it highly doubtful that I will be able to present anything better to you than what has been presented. So, I don't care if you wanna wait and talk about it more. I don't think my opinion, as your finance director, will change. I think we have worked tirelessly to bring this from twelve-point-five percent down to four percent, and I can tell you the, the issue of, there, somebody said possibly money from the general fund or raise taxes. We don't have an option of raising taxes when we have a levy limit. Um, that's not an option. We, I, uh, in my opinion, this is, as your finance director, this is my best and final offer for you, and I'd say about ninety-nine percent chance that in another month or two months or whatever, it'll be the same thing.
Are there further comments? Councilor Herrick.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, this kind of toward Gene. Gene, based on what the public has, has brought to us, I mean, you don't have to answer it now, but I guess that's me, what we're kinda looking at is, what kind of answers can you give and what was brought up, you know, by the public tonight? I guess I'm kinda curious about that. I mean, I, in that, in that respect, so...
Well, I don't, I don't know which point you would want me to address, because there have been some comments that the numbers that you have been presented are accurate or that we have doubts about our numbers. I don't think we have any doubts about our numbers, and I think we're trying to deal with them as best as we can. Um, so, I guess you can ask me specific questions and I'll do my best to answer them, but I, I believe the information that you have been given is good financial information.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any further questions that, that are directed toward the motion to refer to committee? If not, we'll call a vote, and I request a roll-call vote to refer this to committee.
Okay, this is a motion to refer to the finance committee. Um, Councilor Olson?
Yes.
Bridge?
No.
Bender?
Yes.
Merzig?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Finsland?
No.
Herrick?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Dalbec?
No.
Six to four, the motion would pass.
Motion to refer is passed, so it, uh, negates the motion to accept the mayor's proposal.
Motion adjourned.
Motion made by Councilor McKenzie to adjourn. Now, we'll give the second to Dalbec. Well, we are adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.